So I'll call to order this meeting of the Regional School Committee. Today is January 14th and we are meeting in the Dover Sherburne Middle School Library. The time is now 6:32 PM. First on the agenda are community comments. We have provided a virtual link for those who wish to make a comment, but for whom it is not possible or preferred to attend in person. Are there any community comments tonight? Seeing none here?
There's one.
There is.
There's one.
Sorry. Hi, Doug Kingsley.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes. We can hear you.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, good. Doug Kingsley, 138 Farm Road in Sherburne. This is my first attendance at a combined school meeting. The Sherburne Advisory Committee. Am I correct in understanding that the school committee does not allow the public to ask questions or comment during the meetings other than at the beginning of the meeting, like when I'm speaking right now? My question is, when did this policy start and why is it in place? And do you realize that virtually every other town committee allows for the public to ask questions during meetings? And is this something you plan to keep in place? Or are you going to revert to the way things used to be?
I think it's pretty common practice, Doug, at school committee meetings because once we have the presentations, just not to have interruptions and things like that during the presentation, we've always had the open comments in the beginning. If you'd like to speak in response to anything, I'm always available by email or in person between meetings and we can put things on the agenda for future meetings.
So when someone hears something presented at the meeting and they have a question, they can't ask a question? Is that some of the way it works?
That's the policy too.
Yeah.
Yes.
That is the MASC policy as well.
When did that start? This was, it hasn't always been this way, has it?
Yes.
Decades, yeah.
Decades.
Decades?
Yep.
Okay. You answered my question.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have student council representatives. So Esther, would you like to give an update?
Hello. I'm here this time. So, update on last year, 2024, late 2024. We completed Spirit Week. And every year, annually, we do it with a fundraiser involved, but that was Mr. Hickey's idea, so we tried to do something new and we didn't include the fundraiser. However, this year, oh yeah, the seniors won. Like always, the seniors won. It was, we also included like a tug of war, whereas like two extra points in that one went successfully because it was, in our plans, for like two years now and we made that happen. And then on this month, we were planning town meetings and how to get student voice and input from, because some people are just too shy to hold the mic and then stand up in front of your entire grade and say something that concerns you. Or if it's something like super personal, we're trying different ways of how to get student input or how to fix that. We did Google Forms, mandatory Google Forms, like in your math class, five minutes, take it out to fill it. It's like your name, your grade, and then like maximum four topics you would like to see changed, which are specific. And then we're all, we're just gonna make like an average size of them. Like, oh, this one, this one has been, flex time has been discussed the most or the cafeteria food is not as good. And then we're still debating on physical town meeting, but we hope to hold those soon after the mid-years. And then after that, we were thinking of like a potential fundraiser, but we still haven't like decided much on that because we still also need to host a food drive that's gonna happen. And that's also annually we do. And it's where people who are 16 and above and meet the health requirements donate food to the Red Cross donation. And we're also helping with that and getting specific instructions on how to make sure people, when they're dizzy or when they get their blood drawn, what to give them, what to do if something happens on accident. And that's all for our future plans.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. You're always welcome to stay, but we also know you have a very busy after-school.
Yes, because I will be reading, so I'll do that.
Thank you.
One thing, I just wanted to say, I really admire the way that you went about surveying the students and having it done through the math classes so that you got pretty much 100% participation, which is great data. I mean, that's really, that's a great. I'd love to know some of the ideas that students had or what you guys came up with. That's great.
There's a lot of input at the moment because like every single class is taking it. So that's gonna take all week to figure out how to condense those.
Yeah. Can I add on that as well? I think, you know, what's interesting about the Google Forms is how to kind of structure your input too. If you're having trouble analyzing this year, you may decide how to change the questions a little bit next year. But even if you have a lot of input, and you may already know this, but the Canva app, which is probably freely available, allows you to put Google Form survey respondent results in and it presents like nice infographic content ability. So it could be a neat project for someone who likes design and as a way to communicate those trends outwards.
That's new.
Yeah. You might enjoy it.
It's not like this whole response. And we try to have it as, we try to have the questions as big as possible so students would like try and come up with something. Because if you're being asked about like, what do you want to change about the school, you can't really think of as many things. But if you already had a chance before and you like elaborated on it and now you just have more ideas because you didn't think of them previously, that also works.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Awesome.
Wonderful, hi.
You too.
Thank you too.
Thanks for coming.
Next on the agenda, we have superintendent's comments. So Superintendent McCoy?
Great, thank you. So I was thinking about all that we've been working on in the last month and so I'll give a couple of updates. And then I know we'll all be together with the Dover and Sherburne School Committees later this month, so we'll have a larger update then. But I just want to recognize the cast and crew of Annie. I think, you know, at this point, I've built up our musicals in my mind so much, I always think I'm gonna go there. And someday, it's not gonna be magical, but it's always magical. So they did just such an amazing job, as well as our concerts, our winter concerts. And, you know, I was there both as an educator and as a mom. And it just, the increase in participation in our music program is so visible in the number of kids who take the stage. And I think that speaks to our elementary educators and sending them up to sixth grade. And then the fact that our high school educators have worked so hard to make sure that those who are interested in music in younger years continue on through high school. So kudos to our music department. We've been working a lot on budgets and Dawn will touch on that in a little bit. And then lastly, I just want to mention the Student Advisory Council. So as you know, Denny and I are meeting with a representative group of students from grades six through 12. We'd now met twice. Esther happens to be on that committee. And I love the fact that she brought up the adjustment they've made to town hall format and asking for students for input from class instead of just through a microphone in an auditorium. That was actually one of the ideas that came out of our Student Advisory Council. So it's nice to see these things taking hold. They're working on some surveys right now. Our students in general feel like they're surveyed all the time. And so we're trying to make sense of what surveys mean what and what the purpose is and who uses it for what purpose. And giving us some input on that. And then they brainstormed some other ideas that they'd love to work on that we'll consider for the next couple of months. One is looking at the Metco bus and the length of time some of our students stay before and after school as a result of it. Another is looking at the electives and, you know, working with our high school educators and administrators to make sure their electives are relative to the 21st century. So we'll see what they come up with. Anything else? No? All right.
Thank you.
Happy to take questions, but there'll be a much larger presentation later this month.
Great, thank you. Any questions? We'll wait till later in the month? Sounds good.
28th.
Thanks. All right. Next, we have the financial reports.
So good evening. And your packet is the vouchers that were, or the warrants that were processed since your last meeting. And again, I always thank Colleen for signing those on your behalf. I'll just highlight that the last warrant on there for the $333,000 was the second payment on the rooftop unit. As you remember, we had the 999-999. This was the 333, almost 333. And so that is a big chunk of that project that has already been paid for. And we appreciate the town of Dover for actually giving us their assessment a little bit ahead of schedule so that we can make that payment happen. On your monthly financial report, you have your revenues and expenditures as of December 31st. Remember, we run a running report. So the only thing that I've highlighted to point out to you is that we are seeing some larger volume of extended leaves. And so our substitute number is already over budget and we expect that actually to continue to be over budget. We have all different kinds of leaves happening and we encumber those as they happen. But there are some leaves that we don't, you know, don't know about yet. So just know that that is what's happening there. So it's more not of daily substitute needs, it's actually more of leaves that are happening that we have to backfill. Any questions on any of the financial information? It's pretty straightforward from that perspective. Okay, those are your financial reports.
Thank you. We have two discussion items. Let's see. First is standards and poor's bond rating and then the FY26 budget.
Yeah, so the standard in poor's bond rating, that was actually sort of news to me. We were reached out to, I think in late October, that we had been, the region had been selected for a re-exam of our bond rating based on newly released criteria that they came out with on September 9th. And we have not been reviewed since 10 years ago, so like 2014, 2015. And that was done in connection with, we refinanced the big chunk of the middle school bond back then. So anytime you're out active in the bond market, you get reevaluated. So we were flagged because we had not been reevaluated in 10 years and they had changed the criteria. So it's a little bit all sort of news to us. We, Patrick, Collins and myself had to supply them a large amount of financial information. They were basing this on our fiscal year '23. Then we also had to give them some current information. And we had an hour-long interview with them where they asked us all kinds of questions about our operations, our budget, how we correspond with corporate with the town and building our budgets and such. We were told when we went into this, so we, because we actually still have debt outstanding, we have a bond advisor who works with us to do all the bond compliance work every year. So she gave us a heads up that based on this new criteria, you probably were gonna be downgraded because they were expecting to see you maintain in your E and D the highest amount that you could. And because we didn't have that, she told us right away, you're probably gonna be downgraded. She goes, do I think it's right? No, but it's just the criteria that they had built. So we did spend a lot of time talking to the analyst about how you couldn't really look at us as an individual because we're only as strong as our two towns. And both our towns are AAA and that are financially sound. And they're the ones who are sort of guiding us as to how much of reserve that we maintain. But they have boxes to check. And we got the final report. It's actually an interesting situation. They reach out to you and say, are you available? Because when we give you the report, you've got two hours. And two hours to comment. So we all had to like make sure we were gonna be around and be able to review and talk amongst ourselves before because we did have some changes that we asked them to make. So it is a pretty quick turnaround once they release the report. So we weren't surprised that we were downgraded. And when you read the report, it's predominantly based on they want to see us maintain the highest level of reserves. Even our policy says three to 4% in our policy. So the good news is that it doesn't have a huge impact on us because at this point, as of May, we're not gonna have any outstanding bonds for our debt will be paid off. And our current protocol is to not borrow directly through the region, but to enter into the intermunicipal agreements with the towns and they borrow on our behalf. And they're the ones who hold the AAA bond rating in most cases. So if there was ever a situation where the towns wanted the regions to start borrowing again on our own, we could take steps to get our bond rating back up. We would just work with the towns to say, if you want us to borrow, we need to have our E and D back up to 5%. And I think the only other thing they said, we probably should have a debt policy. Because obviously, if you're gonna borrow, you should have a debt policy. So there are steps that we can take to go back up. But at the end of the day, because we're not borrowing, this rating doesn't really have an impact on us. And it's not like we were substantially downgraded. We just went to AA+. But we wanted to share this with you and I think it's important to share with the towns so that they understand that some of the decisions that they make on our behalf don't sometimes have impact. And we just need to be conscious of that, so. And if you'd like, you can Google the September 9th criteria and it spells it all out and it gives you the ratings way more than you probably want. Even some of the stuff, I'm like, what are these acronyms? But I think they were, you know, obviously, we operate every year at or, you know, with positive variances, so that's a positive. They did like that we had the long-range capital plan, that we share monthly reports with you. I had to share examples of the monthly report, share with the school committee. I mean, they did, I think they would say, you know, do you do long-range forecasts? And like, in a school, that's a little hard to do. But that is one of their criteria that they look at too. It's probably more for a town. I think regional school districts are in their own little cocoon that operate a little differently, but they don't really look at it that way. They look at you as a broad municipality. And therefore, you know, even though we're capped at 5%, they actually want their towns that even have much higher than 5%. So they understand the constraints that we're under. But at the end of the day, I think there were still good things. They were impressed with our OPEB, that we've been funding it and we're working down that liability. So it was actually sort of a good exercise to walk through, to have someone independent come and just sort of look at what we look like right now from a financial standpoint. So let you know if anything more comes of this. Again, if we want to be strategic and go back to borrowing, we know the steps, they told us what we needed to do, we could go back out and maybe reevaluate it.
Thank you. And this short report was very helpful, but we could all look back at the September 9th details if we want more information.
Yeah, the September is, it lays out all the criteria and how they do the ratings, the one through, the one through four.
Great, thanks.
If you want to get down to that level.
Let's see. All right. Let's see, there are no action items tonight.
So let me just quickly just talk about this year '26 budget.
Yes, thank you.
So there is actually no new information to share. As you know, we're still pretty early into January. Your February meeting, your February 4th meeting is where by that point, we will have the state budget. So we will know potentially what our initial projection is for chapter 70 and chapter 71. That has an impact because we're hoping that'll be more money, right? So if there's more money, it lowers the assessments for our two towns. By February 4th, we will also have a clearer picture of what our healthcare premium increase will be. Keep in mind, we're carrying 9% in the budget. From what I'm hearing from some initial steering committee meetings that I've been in, we're probably looking more at the between, in the sevens versus nine increase. So I think they'll see some savings from that. And we will also be able to recognize any retirements because we will be past that February 1st notification date. And we do have several retirements. So we're looking to see some positive adjustments and that there'll be brackets around them to bring forward to you on the 4th. And then we will finalize as much as we can because then keep in mind, we have our joint meeting with Dover Warren and Sherburne Advisory on February 12th. So you're all back together again on the 4th and then on the 12th when we do sort of the joint conversation with both town finance committees. So hopefully, we'll have, we should have almost all the pieces of the puzzle by that evening. And anything else that comes in, we'll bring forward to you on March 4th, which is your public hearing. So that is the night that we actually do the presentation for any community members who want to attend and ask questions specifically about the school budget. And at that point, when we close that budget hearing, you guys will have a last chance, opportunity to ask any questions. And following that, we will vote the final budget that then continues on into the town processes. And with that, we will have a probably first time in a while, I think first time actually in a long time, that we might do a mini presentation at Sherburne Advisory's public hearing on March 22nd and then Dover's on March 17th. And again, that's usually, Andrew, you might do Sherburne's and Mark potentially would do Dover's. And that's an opportunity where that is all the town budgets coming forward and any residents who want to attend have the opportunity to talk about not only the budgets, but also the other warrant articles that are preparing ourselves for town meeting. And then we have the town meeting date. So there's a whole schedule of events, but I think the key one coming up, I think it's gonna be the meeting on February 12th with the two joint committees. Keep in mind also that to sort of have the best presentation we can, we have our capital. I know we haven't had a formal, larger committee, but no, the smaller committee has been working on the capital project for the fields, the turf, track, fixing lighting replacement. And so our landscape architect will be joining us on February 12th. We're going to do like a half hour, probably at 6:30. So 6:30 to 7, I think it's gonna be a presentation where he'll come and give a more formal presentation with the renderings and the detailed cost estimate at that meeting and then leave time for questions. So we're thinking about a 10%, a 10-minute presentation with 20 minutes worth of questions. At that point, we're gonna have both towns here and I've invited their capital committees, any members that don't overlap to also join us. It'll be an opportunity for an expert to answer some of the questions that the towns may have and start helping us build our story as we move forward. We still won't have the final number because I think it will have gone out to bid, I believe, but we won't have the bid opening yet. But our consultant, Mark from Actavis, will be able to start, I'm gonna have him just come right out and start talking about some of the issues that we know are hot topics, like the PFAS and such. But to get that information out there, have an expert on hand who does this every day to answer some questions that may come up. And we will build from there. But I figured that would be best to have us all in one ring together to make that presentation. It is a large ask from both towns. Our preliminary discussions with the towns, I will say there's continued push for us to look for outside funding. So I do have the steering committee coming together just to sort of think that through a little bit to see how we wanna approach that. Keep in mind, on the capital plan I presented, we've got the tennis courts lingering as well. So I think the thought process was to, because this project was privately funded the first go-around, any potential funding in the community that I think we are hoping to hold back and put towards tennis courts. But that can be discussion that we can, that we can have. So that is sort of setting the stage. I know tonight, again, didn't have a lot of new information to share, but a little bit clearer path of how we're gonna get there and hopefully, all good news to share as we continue on this path.
Thank you. Any questions? Next on the agenda then, we have consent items. First being the review of the 2024 Town Report draft, which I will send to the Dover Town Hall this week. And thanks, Dawn and Denny, for just double-checking my draft and work and helping with a few values. It's, you know, something we just give as an update to Dover every year. And I sent you a copy just last night.
Oh, Mark.
Yes?
I only have the tiniest little thing. Thank you for doing this. I know it's cumbersome. The tiniest tiny thing is that at the very end, membership Judy spells her name with an I. I'm sure she would probably never.
No, you're right. And I'm careful when I text her.
I almost made that change when I was thinking, wait, is it?
Yeah, it is.
No, but it was fantastic. I almost didn't bring it up because.
No, thanks. I will change it. When I text, I'm careful with the I. And I'm Haley with an H-A-L-E-Y. And I, you know, so I get it, I get it. I will make that adjustment. Thanks.
But it's fantastic and it's a lot of work.
Thanks so much. I will definitely make sure I update that tonight. Anything else from that?
I just, I had one thing. And I was trying to read it sort of as a taxpayer, looking at if I didn't know anything about the schools, you know? And just trying to, what, I think the only thing that I would maybe expand just a bit is just sort of focusing also on how we focus on citizenship in our students and maybe highlighting some of that.
I know. It's tricky because we have a word count, a limit, it's so tight.
Yeah.
But if we were.
I don't know if there's a concise way to say.
Yeah.
If I could help. I do a report, as does Ann Deverke and John Smith and Deborah Edman for Dover and Allison Gulliver for Sherburne and has a lot of the citizenship in the middle school report.
Okay, all right. Not that you don't want to mention it. This was not a place for detail, but I'm just sort of thinking about if you're getting the flavor of the schools, you know, is this something to explicitly state? But it's, I think this is not the only place that someone would learn about the school, is what you're saying.
And we try not to overlap too much. We want it to sound like we're aligned because I think we are aligned, but.
Yeah.
I just, I was thinking we do a lot more than just challenge success. That's sort of what I was thinking and sort of highlighting it. But I don't think it has, it could be among other things or something like just adding a, among other programs, but.
I think that's where you can take a different sort of viewpoint every year. I have always, when I was on school committee, I always felt like we write these in vacuums and we really should all come together.
Really?
Because, you know, I look at several of these because I, and there's duplicate. So we're wasting our airtime sometimes because we're all saying the same thing. So it'd be great if, I know we always wait to do this a little bit at last minute, but all the players, we pulled all the schools together and really look at it and clean it up a little bit. So something for next year, I said this every year. But I do think that we, when you write it in a vacuum and you don't know what the other people are saying, it's not maybe the best story that we can tell.
Right. It can be a shared story.
Yeah, exactly.
Details, yeah. But overall, I loved it. There was no changes.
Thanks so much. I appreciate that. And I can make a note for next year. There are certain opportunities where you could rotate in kind of substituting an equally important aspect of student life. Thanks, it's great. All right, we have two more items. We'll just discuss as we had that. And then at the end of all three, I think we can approve the items with a single vote. But the next is approval of minutes from December 3rd. They start on page 17 of the PDF. And the last, if there's no discussion points there, is some gifts and grants to mention. On, please, page 19 in the PDF this begins. So.
I think the nice one is that the success the soccer team had, they wanted to keep their jerseys.
Yes.
And so they were all willing to pay for the, to buy the jersey because obviously we have to replace it for the next year's team. But the Dub and Steph Ward and contributed gift so everyone could keep their jersey. And Emily's already reordered the new ones.
Yeah.
But that was, I think, a really nice gesture and sort of exciting for the kids to be able to hold on to that. Sort of, right?
Yep, yes.
Some memory.
Yes, great way to renew the stock and let kids take some memory, absolutely, because they may have taken anyway. We probably all have some high school gear around, but.
And then the Metco grant.
Yes, the Metco grant for fifteen thousand dollars for covering diversity, equity and culturally responsive teaching. I think we were, we were just, you know, I think there's such a crunch time for a lot of schools to think about how to provide excellent programming and still do it. Got a reasonable cost, so whenever we can get grant money that supports that, it's fantastic. And when we can provide programming, it really kind of reinforces our values to really support all students and families. So this is a great one as well.
And we had a catch-all one, we had a little bit of everything.
Yes, some miscellaneous scholarships and the camera was great. It was like, wow, I'd like to actually go back to a regular camera. And three thousand dollars from PTO to cover challenge success related activities. So thank you as always to the people who think of the school system and provide gifts to support the work. So, um, may I have a motion to approve these three content consent items? The review of the 2024 Town Report, the approval of minutes from December third and the grants.
Colleen Burt, Simone.
Colleen Burt, okay, may I have a second?
I'll say.
Kevin Brown, thank you, Kevin. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, the motion carries. No informational items tonight, so I think we are open suggestions for February fourth meeting, if you have any. I know we have a lot of financial planning and Dawn already shared a lot that will be on the radar for us. But you can be in touch with me if you have ideas or questions leading into February fourth. And I think that means our meeting has come to an end. So it is now seven oh three PM. May I have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, anyone?
Kate Potter, Simone.
Uh, may I have a second?
I'll say.
All right, Colleen Burt, thank you. And all in favor? All right, excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.